In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments for the City of Toronto was called to order. The committee considers applications for minor variances, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new lots. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require a more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present and interested and wishes to address the committee. If there are people and interests, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room in an effort to resolve concerns or issues. If no person is present and interested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. When addressing the committee, please come forward, hand in your decision request card to the committee staff seated on my right, then go to the podium, state your name and The applicant will have five minutes. The individuals in opposition will then be allowed to express their views. However, if there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's views. We want to hear your views, but we do not want them repeated ad infinitum. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submissions. When all speakers have finished, the applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut the related issues raised. The matter will then be taken into committee for decision. That will be the end of all discussion. If you don't agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Appeals are heard by a tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information about T-Lab, see their website or the Committee of Adjustments' website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. To receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of the appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card. Please include your email address, as the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. Make sure you hand in your completed form to the Deputy Secretary-Treasurer or her staff before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. Are there any declarations of interest on the 130 list? No? Michael? Okay. Are there any files to be closed on the 130 list?
Item number twenty-five, ten McMaster, there's -- the application has been withdrawn. The file needs to be closed, and there's also the matter of refund.
So that's a question we have to address? The refund?
Yes. Members have materials to speak to the refund request.
Okay, this is -- well, this is the matter, Mr. Chair, I guess, where the applicant advised and actually produced an email. He's had a discussion with staff, and they told him he had to do it in writing, so two hours after, an hour and a half after he received the email, it appears that he responded with an email, and we have a copy. However, city staff somehow did not receive it, checked the email records, could not receive it. So I am satisfied, and I think the applicant, who is a solicitor, has actually done a statutory declaration swearing attesting to the fact that he did send this email. So I think in this circumstances, although normally we don't issue a refund, I think in this situation, a refund is warranted because the applicant did do what staff advised him to do, and unfortunately, through the email, was not received. So in that case, I'll make a motion to close the file and refund the application fee less. I believe there's a certain amount. A hundred dollars does not get refunded.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the applicant's not here, correct? Okay, because I did noted the discrepancy that his stat deck was signed by somebody else, not Commissioner. We have a copy of the email, so.
Yeah. Leaving the statutory declaration aside. Okay, are there any applicants who wish to withdraw their application or to defer it? Okay, I will vet the list. Number twenty-one, Seventh Park Vista, applicant? Yes, any opposition? No? Okay. Number twenty-two, sixty-one Strathern Road, applicant? Yes, any opposition? No. Twenty-three, three oh-two Dover Court Road, applicant? Yes, any opposition? Twenty-four, two eighty King Street East, applicant? Yes, any opposition? Number twenty-six, ninety-six dash one hundred Ossington Avenue, applicant? Yes, any opposition? Number twenty-seven, fourteen Menon Road, applicant? Yes, any opposition? Twenty-eight, six fifty-five Crawford Street?
Members have correspondence on this file in terms of, there was an incorrect zoning notice, so there's another deferral.
So is that a request for a deferral, or is it being deferred automatically because it has to be rescheduled?
You can speak to whether or not there'll be a rescheduling fee.
Yes. Well, who's -- the fact that there was an incorrect zoning notice, was that the applicant's fault, the agent, or the -- was it city staff? Or they just missed?
Pardon? The zoning examiner made an error. Okay, do we have a motion with respect to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend it be rescheduled without a fee if the mistake was on the part of the city.
I'll agree.
All right, all in favor? Passes? No fee. Number twenty-nine, thirty-four Sevington Crescent, applicant? Any opposition? Number thirty, two eighteen Jones Avenue, applicant? Yes, any opposition to this application? Now, a world's record. Number twenty-one. We're going back to number twenty-one. We're going to hear number twenty-one at this time. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing seven-story, eighty-four-unit apartment building by converting the fourth-story storage room into a one-bedroom unit. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from the Planner of Ravine and Natural Protection, Urban Forestry, staff report from Toronto and Region Conservation Authority, and correspondence in opposition from four oh-seven dash seven Park Vista. Your name, sir?
Scott Palmeri.
Right. So just tell us about this space that's being converted. It's a storage room?
Yes, it's a landlord's storage room on the fourth floor.
Okay, and with no -- it's not an amenity to the tenants at all?
No.
Okay, so the only opposition was a letter from one of the tenants because he felt that it's a poorly insulated and soundproofed room, et cetera. But I imagine if you're making it into an apartment, it's going to be changed considerably.
So just to get the history, was this originally an apartment and was used as a -- it says not file room, office, as opposed to a storage room? So I don't know if there was someone sitting there taking calls on the phone or doing paperwork in that particular space actually occupying it, but I don't -- I assume it has a washroom and is going to have a kitchen, but was it complete -- was it demised separately? Because I think what I imply from the letter is that the other -- he doesn't have a problem with his other wall, it's just because maybe this one was demised at some point other than to be a complete suite.
Right. I believe it's -- it was built originally with the building. It currently houses building drawings, Christmas decorations, that kind of thing. The -- to be honest, when we start this process, it's -- we haven't got into the details of the building permit, but when we go to do the building permit, we need to provide a sound rating of STC fifty between suites.
So the other thing is, is this -- I don't see a variance for it being a substandard size, is it the same size as most of the other apartments, or is it going to be a smaller bachelor or?
It'll be a one-bedroom, and it's between five and six hundred square feet, so I'm not sure what it has relates to the rest of the unit.
But it is a sufficient size suite?
Yeah.
So it does go some distance. The city is looking for creation of more affordable housing, so this as one unit, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Do you have any more questions?
No.
I'd like to move approval of the application. The concern of the committee initially was, was this a loss to the tenants of the building, and apparently it is, and part of the management of the building? I'm satisfied that these are fairly minor variances, and I recommend the application.
I'll second Mr. Niffel's motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number twenty-two, sixty-one Strathern Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the two-story D test dwelling by converting the basement area under the rear ground floor deck into storage space. The material we have are material supplied by the applicant, a correspondence from Urban Forestry, a report from Conservation Authority, and five form letters in support. I don't understand this application. I mean, isn't basement space storage space? I don't understand why you need to.
The original building permit was submitted with unexcavated space beneath the rear deck.
It's like a crawl space bunk below the deck.
It was an unexcavated space. As a result of construction activities in the shoring, the foundations of the building were all poured at the basement level. A subsequent revision was obtained for that. This space is not connected to the building, and what we are attempting to do, this application, is provide a door from the basement space to the space underneath that rear covered porch.
So that's why you have a length and a depth variance, because really, you're not doing much.
Correct. There's no physical change to the outside of the building and no physical change to the structure of the building. We're just going to be providing a door at the basement level into that space.
The door is in the basement, not from the outside?
Correct.
So it's adjacent or?
It's at the rear.
Butts the basement area, it just needs a door to connect it?
Correct.
So is this relatively newly constructed house, or?
Yes, it's a house that's -- it's under construction now, under building permit issued in 2017.
Do you have the drawings in front of you?
I do.
I had a similar vision. The existing basement plan.
Yep.
It's the area that's got an X through it.
Correct.
Basically, just where the -- sorry, the area on the left that's got an X through it. It's a rectangular area, and you're just basically putting a doorway between that, which is in fact excavated now, and the existing basement.
Correct. So the difference is between page two and page three, which shows the X in the area on the left, which is the space that has no access, and then in page three, it shows you the location of the door and the access from the basement into that space.
And I now see that this was subject to an appeal to the OMB in January 31st, 2017, just under two years ago, with respect to the?
The original house, correct.
Original house. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Jason Rodriguez. Sorry.
Chairman, if no one else has any questions, I'd like to move approval of the application without condition. A very minor variance, which clearly needs the test variance approval.
I agree, and I'll second the motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three, three oh-two Dover Court Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story townhouse, row house, by constructing a basement secondary suite with a front basement walkout and reconstructing the garage, which will include a rooftop deck. We have before us material submitted by the applicant and correspondence in concern or interest from three oh-four.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Brian Hagan. I'm the agent and architect for the project. I've got a statement that I might read. I don't know if that, if you guys don't mind, I could read this to you. Just explains our positions on everything, might clarify the things that we're asking for.
Can I just ask you? I'm sorry. I just want to know if three oh-four is connected to three oh-two?
Sure, yes, that's the neighbor directly to the north. What they've requested is, instead of having the typical, at the roof deck, having the typical opaque screen to do a glass rail, and we're totally fine with that, and we've let them know. We're happy to oblige that.
Your statement may cover this, if not, perhaps you could answer.
That's fine.
Question I have, we have a number of emails between you and the planning department. I gather you do not have an agreement on how to get out of the basement. You were proposing a front walkout from the basement.
That's right.
And planning, I gather, I want to make sure I've got this correct, planning is still opposed to that?
Yes. Yeah, they weren't convinced by our arguments, but we do believe that we have a strong reasons why, and it makes the most sense for the walkout at the front.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any others in the row of townhouses? I don't know how many there are, that have a secondary entrance in the front?
Not immediately connected. It's a row of three. But there are in the neighborhood, and we have submitted, I don't know if you have before you, examples in the neighborhood of other front walkouts nearby. It's fairly typical for Little Portugal.
We have your statements.
Your letter dated November the 12th?
If you've read that, then you understand our positions.
So there is actually no new construct, in terms of no new addition being built here?
Well, the garage that's attached at the rear, we want to extend those walls up to create a flat roof.
Right.
To serve as a platform.
Backup rooftop deck.
Right.
But other than that, to the actual house itself, there's no?
That's correct, right. No added floor area.
Okay.
Except the -- I have precedence concerns on this one, because basically, you're covering virtually the entire lot with the building. And if that was seen as a precedent, we'd have a real problem in this community. Can you tell me why you're -- why there are no other options than covering almost the entire site? Because I'm not persuaded by the solution that I see, that these variances are warranted. I think they're rather excessive.
Sure. Well, the -- I understand. The attached garage was built in 1982. It, at the time, was legally done. It got the city's approval. We've submitted that documentation. So we're actually, in a way, trying to, without removing the car, the parking spot, to replace the landscaped area on top of the roof. That's why we want to put a deck on top.
Walk me through, on your survey, how much of that back is the attached garage? Is it the whole back, that whole area?
It's a dark area.
So you already, as an existing condition, you're covering, what, ninety percent of the site?
It's an unusual situation. It's a shallow, it's a relatively shallow site, as it is. There's a short laneway at the back. The other two attached neighbors, they're the only ones on our side that are served by that laneway. Well, the one to the north, it's just basically a parking spot for them, and?
Backyard is.
The backyard, right. So this garage, I guess, was, at the time, seen as an appropriate addition. So we are just seeking to maintain that, but to, in our mind, improve upon it with the green roof and with the deck.
And just another question. The FSI you're seeking is 1.21 times the area of the lot, whereas 0.6 is permitted. You know what your current?
It's no change.
So you're already at 1.21?
Yes, it's just the, it's a short lot, and it's a row house, and there's the attached garage. And it's not an excessively sized garage. That's why we also need to, slightly not big enough for the legal parking spot, although a car will fit in there. So it's not as though the garage is unnecessarily huge.
Are most of these variance requests existing conditions?
They are, yes.
Could you just go through them, one to -- oh, there's a bunch of them. Could you just tell us which ones are existing and which ones aren't? Perhaps maybe it's easier just to say which ones aren't?
Well, everything related to the front yard, where we want the walkout, that is new, basically new to the building. So those variances, there's a?
Which ones are these?
Those are the -- let me get in front of me.
I guess three and four. Landscaping.
Okay. Let's see, the -- so the first one does not change. The second one is an existing situation, that's floor area. Number three, exterior stairs providing pedestrian access, that's related to the front walkout.
So that's a change.
That would be a change to what's existing.
So is the, pardon me, then, is the existing floor space index is already at 1.21?
Yes, because the garage is considered as part of that.
Okay, and the depth is 26.03 now?
Because of the garage, yes. The front yard landscaping requirement, we are seeking a variance for that with the walkout. That's number four on the zoning notice.
You probably don't have 0.75. You're seeing to go to nineteen percent, you're probably below.
That's right. We're, the walkout will be taking up what is otherwise landscaped area in the front yard. It's a tiny front yard, so that's where that request comes from. The next one, number five, that's just the existing situation, and we're trying to mitigate that by doing a portion of the roof as a green roof. That's related to the landscaping of the backyard. Then number six, that's an existing situation, that's the rear yard setback, again, just the garage. And then number seven is related to the walkout. I think, though, this is sometimes interpreted differently by different zoning examiners, we're not, we're essentially not changing the facade. The walkout, as you can see from the elevations, is just using retaining walls and a guardrail, which will just be a metal guardrail, and the entrance to the basement will be effectively below ground. So it's, we're doing as much as we can to respect the existing architecture of the building. I guess hopefully you can see in that front elevation.
Mr. Hagan, you just mentioned that it's a green roof, but I see it's like it's part deck and then beyond a certain distance.
Right, that's right. It's part, it's not a big area, so we're hoping that part of it can be used as a useful deck, and then the other portion as a green roof.
Okay.
Is eight existing?
So eight is existing. It's just, as I said earlier, the parking's tight, but you can fit in there. The, number nine, that's existing. That's the existing garage being on the property line. Number 10 has to do with the, is a repeat of the rear yard. This is the city old Toronto zoning. And number 11, again, is due to the existing conditions of this being a row house. That's a side yard setback issue.
There's three changes, all related to the basement walkout.
It looks to be, though, yes.
And you say there's, and I imagine on Dover Court, there are a lot of basement walkouts?
There are many. It's an area that has many secondary suites.
But you're at odds with the planning department over that, correct? They don't like that.
Well, the particular person that I was dealing with didn't, even though I believe that I sufficiently showed that there were examples, but I think it's also too important to note that having a front access is what's most ideal, also for the occupant, who would be, become a resident of the neighborhood. That would give him city services, emergency services. In my mind, it's most ideal to have, and most fair to have, access from the front. The only other option would be through the rear and?
Because it's a row house, you can't get through them.
That's right, yes.
How would they get to the rear? They'd have to trespass through another property, I guess, but there's a?
Well, they'd have to go through the laneways and?
Yeah.
I don't know if the guy would get confused, perhaps.
They don't have an objection to the suite, but they have an objection to where you're putting the door.
That's right. And also, the house is very, it's a row house, it's an old Victorian bay and gable. There is no internal solution that is not exorbitantly expensive to put an access in.
But we don't actually have a report, do we?
No, that's the thing. There's this email, and you wrote back to Jason.
Yeah.
Couldn't get Aladdin to agree, but he never wrote a report.
He didn't write a report.
Just wondering also, because we have to deal with the neighbor's request to have a glass as opposed to opaque. I assume your client is willing to do that.
We're totally fine with that as a stipulation.
Perhaps, you know, to show that it not all be, not all be deck, and that there'll be the green roof, maybe perhaps we should, if we're inclined to approve this, to tie it to a drawing A five point one.
We'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Niffel, that would, you know, shows where the end of the deck is and where the start of the green roof is.
I was going to offer another observation, which may be not like. Is it possible that what you've shown is the deck could all be green roof? It could be a green roof, and you could have some areas that have sufficient paving to hold furniture. My argument, then, would be that you have supplanted the garden from the ground floor, the ground, up onto another level. I have trouble with that argument if it's a deck. But if it were a green roof, I'm, I don't have as much trouble with this individual application. I'm terrified of the precedent it's going to set. These numbers are scary. I appreciate that if it's turned down, the existing condition is not an improvement.
It's already 1.21.
So I'm trying to find a way of, because I think there's merit in it, a way of supporting what you want to do without creating the whole precedent thing that we're going to have to fight with over and over.
Well, I think it's a very unique circumstance that you won't, that won't serve as precedent in most cases, because it's an existing garage that is legal, that occupies essentially the entire rear yard. There is no?
We have had, in deference to the applicant, he's already, he's told us he's already at 1.21.
Well, the other question I was going to ask, can you tell me what the length would be and what the, maybe you can't, and what the floor space index would be if you excluded the garage?
Yeah, I could try.
Because the unique situation here is the existing garage.
We've had applications of townhouses where either the garage is attached, or there's very little space between the garage and the townhouse.
It's already there, apparently. You're not making this new garage is going to be larger, smaller?
No, it'll be the exact same size. We're hoping to utilize the structure.
I'm less concerned because he's already there. If someone could look at the stats of this property, even without this application, you're already at 1.21 times, and I assume the other two row houses are similar.
They are. They're the exact same footprint. Trying to estimate for you, maybe that garage is 25 square meters, something like that. So that would get you closer to it. Sixty percent is also particularly restrictive in this size, as opposed to 100 percent square floor area. It doesn't meet the existing?
No, but I'm guessing you'd be closer to 90 or 100 rather than 121.
That's right, yeah. I agree with that. And this is a short lot, it's only 80 feet deep. It's not your typical 100 or 100-plus.
And the neighbor doesn't have a similar deck on the other side of the deck that they want the glass as opposed to an opaque screen?
They?
They just want more light on their property.
That's right, that's?
If they had a deck right next to you, you'd just have a piece of glass between you, and we zone not for people, but for the property, so?
Right.
Subsequent owner of that property might not have the same opinion, especially if they had a deck there, but I guess there's no deck there on the other side.
It's, that's right, there is no deck directly beside it. There's just a patio that's mostly used as a parking spot.
They seem to want the light as opposed to the privacy.
They do, yes.
Could you conclude your discussion about the green roof, complete green?
That isn't an option for you, a complete green roof?
Well, it's not, it's not as desirable, no. There is, because of the existing condition, there is no place to go and barbecue or spend time outside.
Could the deck be made of permeable pavers?
We could, we could do something like that. I see what you're saying, is it could be more integrated into it.
I'm trying to put forward the argument that you've basically raised the backyard up a level.
Mm-hmm, right.
Which effectively, that is what you're doing.
Yes, I guess in which case, the requirement is for 75 percent, or whatever it might be listed, to be landscaped or softscape. Maybe we could be held to the softscape requirement.
I don't think you need to change the actual variance. I'm with my colleague, I really think we need to call up your plans in any approval. I'm just desperately trying to come up with a way of wording, whatever we decide, so it's not seen as a precedent for people covering their entire properties with buildings. so it's not seen as a precedent for people covering their entire properties with buildings.
Right, I understand. It is all landscaped, only a portion of it... I mean, a deck is considered landscaping, I believe. It's just not softscape'd, that area. We could... If you felt like the ratio wasn't right, we could reduce the area of the deck to... And it's not really a deck so much as it... It wouldn't be constructed as an elevated deck, per se. It would be within, as we've shown it, within the parapet of the garage, roughly at level with it. I don't know if a stipulation could be made as such to that.
I don't want to make it more complicated. Michael, I'm wondering if we just say, given that there is outdoor amenity space provided at the second level, I think we need something like that in a motion and then call up the drawings. Sure, I'd be happy to recommend the application for approval, subject to the deck that is provided, being provided with... And I don't agree with the neighbor. A permanent opaque screen, a minimum of 1.5 meters in height from the deck. That's a normal requirement that we require for spaces. And subject to outdoor amenity space being provided as shown on drawing A 0.2, 0.3. This one here shows the... Similar to the one this morning, we're just calling out that there's an amenity space provided as part of the application. This one here.
The new deck and the new... Okay, yeah, that shows it better than the one I talked about earlier, 0.5. That's fine. I'll second that motion.
Well, you proposed screening on the deck already.
Right, that's right.
On three sides, on the three open sides. So, it would be on the north, south, and...
And west side. So, the south side is where we've said for it to be opaque and of 1.5 meters. That's, as you said, the typical ask by staff. But at the north side, the neighbors have asked for that to be clear glass at code compliant height. They don't see the need for particularly high glass.
So, it's only on the north side that we're discussing clear glass?
That's right. And just to be clear, it's only on the south side that we're talking about opaque screening.
Okay, then to be clear. Along the south side of the deck, the provision of a permanent opaque screen, 1.5 meters in height from the floor of the deck. And along the north side, a clear, permanent screen. And I think it should be the same height of 1.5 meters from the floor of the deck.
No. I wonder if I could request that it not be required to be so high. I think that that might look awkward to have glass that's meant to be clear at about six feet. And it is the... I mean, obviously deferring to your view on it. And it was noted by the neighbor that they don't need it at a particular height. It was part of their correspondence to even suggest that. That might be sort of ungainly for them to look at. They might not.
What height did you propose it at? Six feet?
I did, but now that it fits just glass, I think that it just needs to be at one meter.
If it's high enough, some of it's going to fall off.
Right.
Privacy requirement.
Right. I would describe that as code compliant height to the deck. It really just becomes a code issue what the right height is, which I believe is 900 millimeters.
Okay. That's... Perhaps we should put it at the request of the neighbor in order to...
Sure, I don't want to get you in a bad precedent situation.
To, you know...
Okay, what if we said that there be permanent screening along the south and west side, is it?
Well, usually it's not required to be on the side that faces a laneway or public thoroughfare. So, we're showing a... There's a little bit of screen, a little bit of design being shown there, but...
Hey, tell me what you proposed. Where did you have it?
The way that we have it, what I'm proposing is that on the south side, that there be a screen, an opaque screen, that is 1.5 meters high on the south side. On the north side, that there be a clear glass railing of code compliant height, as requested by the neighbor. Code compliant?
So, is that, if we're also going to tie it, Carl, to A 2.3, that may show something different. So, I don't want to get into a conflict. That says new screen, new roof deck.
It just says new screen.
Okay.
It doesn't define the screen.
And that side is where there is going to be the screen?
Yes, I don't think there's a conflict. But I do want to call it up to this drawing. So, did you get that as well?
A 2.3, that's for the providing amenity.
Amenity space, outdoor amenity space. So, shout your tall, let it's a recommendation of approval.
Seconder, all in favor? Have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Michael, second. Number 24, 280 King Street East. To maintain the existing eight-story office building on a lot reduced in size by virtue of consent decision BOO 82/18TEY, which altered the northeast rear lot line by way of lot. And the only material we have is material submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
My name's Peter Nikolaikakis. I'm with First Gulf.
Do we have any questions?
There was a piece of the property added on to the adjacent lot. So, as a result, the lot is now undersized, so you have to follow through with this.
Part of the rezoning program in our negotiations was that we bought essentially their little patio space, and that completes our floor plate, so we can get a marketable floor plate. And of course, SASS was very happy to work with us, having an office as a neighbor.
Okay, very good. So, if there's no further questions, I'd move approval of the application.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir.
You have a good day.
Number 26. 96-100 Ossington Avenue. Purpose of this application is to legalize and to maintain the second-floor theater space inside the existing two-story commercial building. The existing ground-floor commercial uses will be maintained. No exterior alterations are proposed. We have before as materials submitted by the applicant, a report from planning, a letter requesting approval from the counselor, and support from 17 Humbert Street and on behalf of the Ossington Community Association. Your name, sir?
My name's Tiziano Zaghi. I'm a planner, and I'm the agent for the applicant.
Okay. We need a presentation. It's pretty straightforward what you want to do, but to make a comment that the Ossington Community Association, what they're asking for is not something we can enforce. They want it explicitly related to the theater use only with the Lower Ossington Theater, and that's something we cannot impose as a condition?
Yes. I understand that.
It seemed to be primarily in consent, but they did make it conditional, their approval or their support on... We can't limit it to one theater company.
I could add, though, that the theater leases the property, and I think it has at least a 10-year lease remaining and options for another five. So, the intent is to remain there certainly in long term.
So, this theater has been in that space for some time?
The theater's been there for approximately 12 years on the second floor.
Sir, you've seen the planning memo December 6th, 5th, where they're requesting a condition of approval?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, we accept that.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion of approval of the application, subject to the planning staff request condition of approval.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir.
Thank you, Chair members.
Number 27, 14 Menon Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by converting the north-attached garage into habitable space and by constructing a new rear yard deck. We have before as materials submitted by the applicant and a report from Right-Away Management.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Boros.
This is my client, Daniel Lane. He's the owner of the house. They're a young family, and basically we're just trying to convert the existing garage into a so-called mudroom, and we are agreed.
Mr. Boros, I don't believe that this is complicated enough to require a presentation.
I do guess there is some questions that I was confused about this issue, about the transportation is raising, about that there's no parking spot when you convert the garage. First of all, this is the first block between Eglington and Newborn.
Yes, it is.
So, there's smaller houses, and it seems to be a very good use of space what you're proposing here with the mudroom and a washroom and a storage area. I assume it's still going to look like a garage from the front?
Basically, yes.
And so, what do you have to say about this situation with the issue that the transportation department is raising?
The driveway is definitely long enough so that we can obviously maintain a car there.
Yeah, and that's existing. All the other neighbors on that have similar situations.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
My understanding, I tend to be corrected, but my understanding is that that's not an option without another approval. And perhaps I'm incorrect, but if that's your intention, which is to park in front of the existing driveway, I think you need another approval. The question here is whether you need a variance approval for parking.
I don't believe...
Or whether you need... Right-Away Management's saying, basically, you don't have parking. Therefore, they want you to grass over the area where the existing driveway is, which would mean that you couldn't use it for parking. If your intention is to use it for parking, I believe you need to have...
Yeah, contact Right-Away.
You need Right-Away approval for that.
Yeah, so basically, it's the second-to-last paragraph of their memo. Should the committee grant the variance as requested? Transportation Services requests the owner to contact Right-Away Management, Construction Activities, located blah, blah, blah. Okay, to obtain a permit to restore the existing driveway within the city to soft landscaping. Okay, now, that's...
That's the first one. The second one?
The second one, since it's located...
Alternatively, the applicant may seek a front yard parking variance, which we don't have. You have to do one or the other.
No, but then it says, "Or submit an application through Transportation Services." So, I think you can submit an application for front yard parking.
Yeah, if for some reason...
Which doesn't have anything to do with us.
Right. If for some reason someone says that there's a park yield, then you may have to come back, but maybe not. So, it's not at your peril that you realize that.
It's not a zoning variance, let's say. And various number of people on this street have exactly the same condition. Again, we would apply to the rights of wait in order to maintain.
They even do say a front yard parking variance or an application under TMC 918, whatever that is, can be considered once this is known.
So, again...
You're asking for us to give you the approval, and you're going to go from there?
Correct.
Okay, motion to approve.
I think, if I might be pointed out, I think it's important that the approval motion also indicate that it's subject to the applicant...
Applying to...
Applying to Transportation Services regarding front yard parking because it has to be resolved one way or the other, or you're going to get back here.
We're good with that.
Okay. Okay, I think that is an amendment to the motion. Whether it's advisory or not.
All in favor?
To approve it, but the applicant is advised to contact... I don't know if it's subject to it. Makes it sound like a true condition. Just the applicant is advised to contact to deal with the front yard parking issue. And resolve. Yeah, I think it's advisory as opposed to a condition.
Yeah, we're not approving anything with respect to parking.
Like I said, if the worse comes to worse and they identify a parking variance and you can't approach it some other way, then you just have to come back.
Not a zoning.
But I think it is a condition because if, for any reason, this didn't take place, there was no further discussion, then...
Then you couldn't park, so...
Then you're not going to be... You're going to have somebody showing up at your doorstep telling you you can't park in the driveway. You have to resolve it.
But I think it's advisory. I think the staff would agree.
Because we're not approving anything related to parking.
So, as long as there's reference that the applicant is advised to contact Transportation Services to seek either front yard parking variance or submit an application through that?
I would didn't get... I would just say contact Right-Away Man... Because to seek a variance, then it's almost... I would just say that they should contact them to deal with the front yard parking issue.
They can't seek a variance through Right-Away Management. Okay. All right, you second that, Mr. Nefal?
Approved with just an advisory comment. The applicant is directed to contact Right-Away Transportation Services.
It's not a condition.
No.
You second that, Mr. Nefal?
Yeah, what is it going to say then? That the applicant is advised to contact... But we need something in the minutes that indicates that all this is dependent on... Otherwise, we're ignoring this report, which I think is a valid report.
Just to contact, to submit an application through Transportation Service. We don't have to say what that application is for, to resolve the front yard parking.
Front yard parking issue.
Issue, yeah.
Okay. Michael, I second that, yeah.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Committee.
Offer number 28 is gone. Number 29, 34 Servington Crescent. Purpose of this application is to alter the two-story detached dwelling by enclosing the front porch. We have before as just materials submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
My name is Deep Sahoda. I'm with Akadia Design Consultants.
Whoa, slow down. I didn't get your name.
My name is Deep Sahoda. I'm Akadia Design Consultants.
Okay, Mr. Sahoda, it's very extreme. I don't think, unless my colleagues are...
No, I don't have any questions.
I don't think we need a presentation on this application. You're just enclosing the front porch, and I don't think there's any conditions or communication from anyone.
No.
So, just the previous decision of the committee some years ago. And so, I move approval of the application.
Second your approval? All in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number 30, 218 Jones Avenue. Purpose of this application is to legalize and to maintain the existing third-story addition with a rear deck constructed onto the two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. And we have before as materials submitted by the applicant. Your name?
My name is Pamela Penn.
Okay. And when was this third-floor addition done?
Actually, to my knowledge, the current property owner, they purchased this house from someone, and someone did this without building permit. And then they realized they had to...
Were they not advised during the purchase that they didn't comply?
That's not to my knowledge.
I don't think the city would know.
How...
So, I think perhaps... I think, I'm just trying to think because it's been a while, the first time I've visited them. Maybe there's something on their front porch, the door, the notice from the city. I don't know. After all those time...
So, do you know, when did your client buy the property? How long ago?
I should check before I came, but when first time I met with them, it's about two years or more than, a little bit more than two years.
Okay, so they've been there at least... But it was built, you're saying, before they purchased the property. I guess as a result, Madam said, you know, we're not a punitive body here. I believe in these circumstances, your client would have had to pay a double fee or something, I believe.
They have, yes.
We're not allowed to. We have to take a look at it as if it wasn't there.
Okay.
Would we approve it and not give any inference for or against the fact that it was built already and it's sitting there, and it was built without a permit?
Understand, yeah.
So, I see it's just a very... It's half a meter in height over, and you're over, you know, a couple of square meters, about 20, less than 20 square meters, 30 square meters over. Do you know what the... Do you know what the, would you happen to know what the area of the lot is before the third floor or no? Before the third-floor addition and the rear deck?
Oh, actually, I don't have with me.
Okay, so you're, they're, they're building at one-fifty-seven, permitted was one-twenty-eight, so.
So basically, they kind of raised up the back.
Right. That, that brought up the floor space index?
Yes.
What screening is, you've got a third-floor deck, quite a substantial third-floor deck. What is screening?
Actually, I think they are just a regular wooden kind of guardrail, framed wood.
What tall is it?
To my measurement, I think it's forty-two inches. That really comply with the building code.
And does the deck extend past the end of the adjacent homes or?
No.
The homes go, and then it's, it's in the, in the space in between?
I, no, actually, um.
Does the other side of the semi have a third floor or no?
I think they do have.
So this.
And also that if you see my elevation P-ten, it's not, it's kind of far, it's a little bit.
Set, yeah.
A setback from the property line.
But what the third floor plan doesn't show is where the adjacent properties are, which is important for screening of the deck.
Let me just look at.
You can't tell if it's an old survey.
No, you can't.
Survey's nineteen-seventy-four.
If you see P-six, third floor, and the new roof deck, it, it is setback from, from the property line.
Yeah, I know that, but what I can't tell on your third-floor plan, I need to know how far the house that's attached to the other half of the semi, how far does that house go back? And how far does the house on the other side go back? So, so are the sides of the deck facing into other properties?
No, not at all. I think that, not I think, I'm, I was on the side. And the next door, they, they are probably, they have done renovation and they're.
Next door, which, which side?
On the north side.
Under the semi.
And it is, it's quite far back than, than their house. I, I don't have, from Google view, you could.
What is far, far back building?
So basically, their rear wall is closer to the, to the rear property line.
Than your deck?
Yes, and then.
There's no need.
My client's house, they are kind of recessed.
Yeah, they're, they're.
So there's, there's a, so the neighbor has a blank wall?
It's just solid wall.
Facing your client's deck?
Yes, solid wall.
Yes.
Yes.
So there's no need for screening on the deck to protect the privacy of the neighbor?
Yes.
The deck does not extend beyond the rear wall of your house. It's not like it sticks out there, right?
Yeah.
It's inset, so it's above the second-story portion, it doesn't go beyond? Is that correct, Carl?
I don't know.
It doesn't go beyond, but I'm saying that it doesn't, it's above the second story, the second-floor portion. It doesn't stick out over the backyard or something. It's not a cantilever situation?
It's on the roof.
Right.
The question I have is I don't, the application isn't complete. We don't have the information necessary. Need to know whether there's a need for screening, and I can't figure it out.
We haven't heard from the neighbor or? We haven't heard from the neighbor, did your, did you or your client speak to the other side of the semi, neighbor?
No, they, they have not, and this, I spoke to them and they were traveling somewhere.
I see.
Because normally I would like, you know, before I would really, might sometimes myself and go along with them to, but so far there's no.
How long are they, do they live in the house, the neighbors?
That's not the new house.
Pardon me?
Do the neighbors live in the house?
It's not.
Yes, I think.
Because I don't know when you filed your application, there is a backlog, so I don't know how long they've been traveling for. When did you submit this application?
Oh, that, that was a while ago and.
Right.
And when I got the notice, you know, about, you know, we have to post notice and also they have to sign, they are going to post it and remove it.
Yeah, that you posted the notice.
So I called and then they were overseas.
I see. But you didn't call them before you put in the application or for the months that the application has been in the system?
Actually, they knew at the time I applied, that was months prior, prior to finalize the, the date.
Now, what I'm saying, Madam Secretary of Treasury, when, do you know when this application was, was put in? Would have been in the summer sometime? Yeah, because I'm just saying, if you said they're, I don't know how long they've been traveling for, but.
Only recently, they, they were traveling.
I see.
Only I called them to say, I, I forward you the email, please post the sign and, and sign this letter.
Okay.
And then I found they were traveling.
Yeah, okay. So I'm saying perhaps in the future, if you're doing these, August would have been the time to get in touch with them when you first put in the application.
Yes.
Because they only get the notice like a couple of weeks ahead of time?
Yes, yes. That's my, that's, that's what I should have done.
So my colleague and I are a little confused as to whether the deck shown on the site plan is the deck as it presently exists or it's larger.
There's a note on that drawing, the south elevation, Carl, it says, "Two-thirty, two-twenty Jones Avenue, south wall beyond," whatever that means. Does that mean that what the agent is trying to say is that their wall goes beyond?
I don't know, but, Mr. Nefeld understands that this deck shown on the site plan.
It's here, it's that deck.
Yeah. So there's another deck?
Yeah, up here. This is the, I'm not worried about that one.
Yeah, I know.
I'm worried, but we're both worried about this one.
Yes. You see on that drawing where it says that the wall, two-twenty goes beyond? Look at the south elevation. There's a note that says, "Two-twenty Jones Avenue, south wall beyond." So it's showing that the other side of the semi actually goes beyond? This one here.
Yeah.
South elevation, yes. And it shows the, the next door beyond, yes.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah. And they didn't complain, so even though they're traveling, so I guess they couldn't.
Excuse me, may I, if you see that P-six, because I went there, measured how big the deck is, and it has dimension, that is exactly what, you know, the current situation is. The width is two-point-five-two-one meters and the width is four-point-five-eight-five meters. P-six, third floor, plan.
Are you able to tell me whether the frame addition on the property to the south, is it a two-story addition or a one-story addition?
To south?
Yeah, the, the house you're not attached to.
Yeah, I think it's similar, it's like a two-and-a-half, right? And the front has all the same.
No, not the front, I'm only worried about the back. Where, if you look at your, your site plan.
Actually, I just.
Two-sixteen, right, two-sixteen? Yeah, it shows a frame addition.
Frame addition, is it one or two stories high?
It is two-story high.
The two, the addition?
Yes, yeah, it, it is.
Then there shouldn't be overlook.
Okay, I think I'm prepared to make a motion if you don't have any more questions.
Yeah.
To approve the application, subject to perhaps screening on the, just two sides of the deck, one-point-five-meter opaque screening, to prevent overlook on both neighbors.
Sure.
So that would be on the, what, the?
North and the south.
Yeah, the north and south sides of the deck. So height of one-point-five.
Okay, thank you.
You have your approval, thank you.
Yeah, so ma'am, next time you come to committee, it's a good idea to speak to the neighbors, not just after the notice goes up, because they may be away, there's a very short window, and since you had six months, since, well, not quite six months, since August, four months, there would have been ample time. And also, when you show your plans, it's nice to see the adjacent properties.
Yes.
As to assess the impact on the adjacent neighbors.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Also, if you're showing a deck, a substantial deck like this, you can predict that we're going to ask you about privacy issues, so you need to be prepared to answer them.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, you're right on time.
Yes.
Two-thirty. This is the one that has the planning report in the wrong place. The one, the one is mark nine, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're now going to go to the two-thirty list. First time in history you ever got there at the right time. So I'm going to vet the list. Number thirty-one, nine Algonquin Avenue is the applicant here. Any opposition? Okay, we will proceed with that. Thirty-two, eighty-nine College View Avenue. Any opposition? Thirty-three, forty-eight Park Hill Road, applicant, yes, any opposition? Thirty-four, forty-eight, four-twenty-eight Plains Road, applicant, yes, any opposition? No. Thirty-five, forty-seven Norlong Boulevard, yes, any opposition? Thirty-six, fifteen Milton Road, yes, any opposition? Okay, that's the two-thirty list. Number thirty-one, nine Algonquin Avenue, the purpose of this application is to enclose the existing one-story front porch with an integral garage below. We have before us material submitted by the applicant and a staff report from planning. Your name, sir?
Matthew Revo.
Okay. So I, I assume that this location from the front lot line is, is existing?
Correct. There is a, a garage, there's a lower carport in the lower level, so the driveway goes down and the grade goes up to the main floor.
You're not cha, you're not changing.
We're not changing.
You're not changing the porch except to enclose it, so.
So I guess now that it's enclosed, it counts as.
Yeah, as a variance.
Exactly. And I did have a chance to review the city staff comments, and I don't have any objection to them.
Okay, so they have two conditions.
Okay, having said that, it's, although we have lots of time, I don't think we need a presentation on this, I'd move approval of the application subject to the two planning conditions.
I agree in second motion.
All in favor? Thank you, sir. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Number thirty-two, we don't have lots of time. Thirty-two, eighty-nine College View Avenue, the purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front third-story dormer addition. We have material submitted by the applicant, and that's all. Your name, sir?
Mark Mitchell, I'm the agent for the applicant.
Okay, so is this, is this an existing floor space index or does the dormer increase the floor space index?
Dormer will increase the floor space index by point zero-one-five. The current house is at point-six-seven-five? And there, I mean, just some, so you know, it is currently a two-and-a-half-story house. We're not altering the height of the house.
Right, okay. Okay, so any further questions? Seems pretty straightforward.
Question, Mr. Chairman, this is, gives the meaning to the word minor variance. I'd like to move approval of the application with.
No conditions, no conditions. I'll second that. All in favor? Thank you, sir. You have your.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Number thirty-three, forty-eight Park Hill Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front vestibule, vestibule addition, a second-story addition over the existing attached garage, a rear cantilevered second addition, and a rear two-tiered ground-floor deck and to expand the existing driveway. We have before us material submitted by the applicant and nine form letters in support. Yes, sir, your name?
Good afternoon, I'm Drew Laslow, agent for the owner. I'd be more than happy to put on a presentation if you wish.
My colleague tells me we don't need a presentation.
Just one question, I think we have to clarify, there's a typo or a missing word in the purpose of the application, is in the rear cantilever second floor addition.
That's correct.
Missing the word floor. I saw there's some typos in the, a couple of them I noticed. Okay, not that I, I don't think we need a presentation on this, Mr. Nefeld? Support from the neighbors.
So if you have no questions, we have a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion of approval of this application. I know the area well, and there's a fair bit of renovation going on, this little pocket, and I think this is a, meets the four tests, it's minor, and doesn't impact, we have no one here in opposition, no comment from city staff, so move approval.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number thirty-four, four-twenty-eight Plains Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition, a rear two-story with a deck, a rear shed. The existing rear detached garage will be demolished and replaced with a side yard parking pad. We have before us material submitted by the applicant and a nine signature petition in support. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon, Rick Bongers, agent on behalf of the homeowners.
Okay, do we need a presentation on this matter?
Again, Madam, Mr. Chair, Madam Secretary of Treasury, I'd note that there is a typo, the word addition is spelled wrong, complete second-story addition, and then a rear two-story, the word addition is missing.
My only question had to do with the height and the context. There are bungalows adjacent to the site, is that correct? Bungalows on either side? Is the bungalow the predominant character of housing on the street? Where are there two-story houses, how close by?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that this isn't a pimple on the face of.
So within our.
Just a minute, would you give us your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry, sir. My name is Jessica Young, Y-O-U-N-G.
Yes, and you're the homeowner?
Pardon me, I'm the homeowner with my husband, Jason Turner.
Okay, so are there two-story houses on the street?
Yes, four-twenty-two Plains Road, on, right on our corner, it's a four, pardon me, a two-story house. Our little block goes from four-twenty-two to four-thirty-two, and then there's a bit of space before you get back onto Plains Road, there's two houses that are going down the next side street. And then if you get closer to Coxwell, you're actually into businesses. So in our small little block, four-twenty-two is two stories, four-twenty-four, four-twenty-six bungalows, and four-thirty is a bungalow as well, and it's four-thirty-two is a bungalow.
And the south side of Plains Road, it's, looks like a large, what is that?
Pardon me, on.
It's the south side of the street, it looks like, is it a school?
It's a school, yeah.
Big schoolyard in the school.
The field of a high school.
Right, okay.
So there's one two-story house on your short little street?
Yes, and then going down the side on Treadway.
Yes.
One of the streets, just around the corner, on that side of the street, east side, there are at least five.
Yeah, there's a lot on Treadway.
Yeah.
Treadway, I just wasn't sure about this area, so you're, you're not the only one in your little strip that's got two storages, another one in that? Because that's a very narrow strip, that's what, one, five, seven, six houses, right?
Yes, sir.
Also, just note a question, I see you on your petition to support your nine properties you got support from, you have one at four-thirty next door. You have one at four-twenty-four, is there a four-twenty-six?
There is a four-twenty-six, the homeowner doesn't live. There is a four twenty-six. The homeowner doesn't live in the home. She rents it. The past five years, we've actually made efforts to meet her just in general as a neighbor, and we haven't yet. The people who were renting recently moved out. They're actually just in there during the construction of their home. So we haven't had an opportunity to speak with her. We have spoken in depth of four thirty. They're our neighbors. And on that side, our property line is-
Closer.
Yeah, closer. So they've been made very well aware of our plans throughout.
Okay, fair enough.
Right, do we have a motion?
Do we have any more questions, Michael? Based on the explanation and the fact that this isn't the only two-story house, because I, I think we need to be careful when there is a predominant character that we not disturb it. This actually is following a trend in the area. I think it's a reasonable solution for development of this site, and I would move approval of the application without condition.
And I meant, you, there's, you know, very, virtually very little variances here other than lot coverage and FSI. There's no height, no side yards, no, so you're sort of respecting that. So I would second that motion.
All right, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number thirty-five, forty-seven Norlong Boulevard. The purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with integral garage, rear basement, walkout, and front porch. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, staff report from Urban Forestry, six form letters in support.
Paulatimi Roustas, homeowner?
Tom Romus, homeowner.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I don't think we need a fulsome presentation for this. It's, looks rather straightforward, and I commend the applicant for building a, doing a new build and only having two very minor variances of lot coverage of two percent, less than two percent, and a rather modest FSI of point six nine. So unless my colleague has any questions, I would move approval of the application with no conditions.
I think there's a forestry condition.
Oh.
Number three.
That's correct.
Three or four?
Three.
Three. Yeah, it was four and it got corrected.
Yeah, okay.
So you just have to contact Urban Forestry.
All right, so all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you understand the condition, the forestry condition that we just were talking? Do you know anything about what we're, you know what we mean when we say there's a forestry condition? About a tree or something?
Yeah.
So condition, you can give them my sheet if they want. Condition three is all bylaw-protected trees, you know, they have to be protected or something?
So you should get in touch with Urban Forestry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think before you start building.
Yeah.
Number thirty-six, fifteen Milton Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-floor addition. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a nine signature petition in support. Your name, sir?
Hi, I'm Daniel Hall. I'm the architect on behalf of the owners and the applicant.
So this is just a top-up?
It is.
A building beyond the building envelope?
No, we're following the walls with the exception that we're adding some insulation on the lower level, so we're technically out another six inches.
Should we have any right-of-way management or transportation?
Can you tell me how, how do you propose to deal with parking?
So the existing parking conditions, there is a driveway, a private drive to the south of the property.
Yep.
And they have an easement ever since the properties were built in favor of the owners of number fifteen. It's not a mutual drive. The people to the south, number eleven, have a similar easement to the south of them, and so on down the block.
Okay.
So they've always parked this way. There is no garage. There is no rear yard parking. But the zoning reviewer says we, technically, this means we don't have parking on our property. In other words, it's a pre-existing condition. We're asking you to regularize.
Do we, we need another variance? Is that, oh, the variance is here.
The variance is there.
That is the other variant.
That's why there's zero spaces, but in fact, you're going to park on the driveway.
Yes, as they always have. And beside that, it's not in the front yard, to be very clear.
And it shows up as a variance because it's not on your lot.
That's right.
Adjacent, but that's the pattern all the way down.
Yes, and that was the, I think we had a little, we submitted a revised site plan that clearly showed the easement at the request of the technician here, so it would be very clear exactly what we're talking about.
Does the easement say that you can use it not just for going over the property, but parking on it?
As far as I know, it's just worded as an easement for a right-of-way.
Yeah, which means that you go from one place to another, but you can't necessarily park on it.
Similarly, though, it means that the owners to the south can't ever block it either, though. They can't ever put a fence on it.
And interfere with your right of passage.
Yeah.
But, listen, it's a condition that's existed, so it's not for us to interfere.
So I see we have, Mr. Hall, your email to staff where you say the right-of-way is a legal right-of-way, that the owner of fifteen Milton has untitled to use the portion of the land on the property to the south as part of their driveway. In fact, that's untitled is a good thing.
We were given the copies of the titles.
Yeah, so.
It says you can use it as a driveway, not to park, but as a driveway.
Exactly. The point being more that this is how everyone on the street has used them, to the point that some of the neighbors think their property actually has this irregular lot line that allows them to do it, and they'll tell you that. Oh, our properties all do as zigzag at the back. It's not strictly true, but it's the, it's the use. I'll point out as well, if it's not clear, there is no number thirteen. The neighboring house is number eleven Milton, and they were one of the people who signed the petition of support.
Has this been built already?
So the house is under construction under an as-of-right permit to underpin and start some work. So they did some underpinning while we could get going, while we're waiting for this process to happen.
Okay.
But the second story has not been started, to be very clear. There's still a roof on the house.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
So I just have a question. You may not be able to answer it. So if the variance goes through and you have legally no parking, and you choose to park on the driveway, who's, who's, what, what action is the city likely to take against you? Are you going to be, there's, you don't have parking, so you, it's, it's not a case of you're required to have parking and it's illegal?
We're approving this with a variance with zero parking.
Which says he has no parking.
In the circumstances.
But I'm concerned that he not get one of those orders that requires him to grass over the driveway and the boulevard and all that stuff, which means he wouldn't be able to park there. It's, we may not be-
Yeah. I think especially it's an existing situation, not just for this property, but the-
All the way down the street.
All the way down the street, where everyone's parking on there. I don't know about the guy at the end.
I don't know either.
You know, so I think that you have a valid reason to be given a zero parking because it doesn't mean you can park.
Yeah, I do too. I just, I was, I don't want you to have to come back again.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But, I mean, in your letter, you, you laid it out properly. The examiner, it says the examiner feels the parking must technically be in the backyard. So technically, you don't have parking.
That's right. So the variance is for zero.
Yeah.
But there is this driveway with a right-of-way that's been there since the nineteen fifty's, I would guess.
But a right-of-way is different than permission.
Yes, exactly.
On the right-of-way.
That says an easement.
That's exactly what the zoning examiner said. He said he looked at it and then said, you can't actually park on a right-of-way. We can't just turn a blind eye to it, was his stance.
But, so that's why you have to get a variance, but I assume nobody's going to do anything about it. You've disclosed the situation to the city and-
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yes, based on that information, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application. I think that this is a reasonable, reasonable request of the city, and I have no problem recommending approval of it, and I believe it meets the test for variance.
I'll second Mr. Netwell's motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I must say I am very impressed with how efficiently you've gone through things today.
Okay.
We will be back at work much sooner than I expected. Thank you.
Lucky.
We got lucky with an easy agenda this afternoon.
Yeah. Okay, we have a three-thirty agenda. Whoops.
Yeah.
Three-thirty.
That's what I mentioned.
I thought, I know, but I didn't realize we'd be this early.
You'd have to entertain.
Yes. Okay, so. Thank you. Are you here for the three-thirty agenda?
Our agent isn't here yet.
Your agent isn't here yet?
We can't do it because the neighbors have walked in at the last minute. Even if you were all here, we couldn't really hear the applications. You have five, there's only five applicants.
We have to wait till three-thirty.
By four.
Pardon?
Oh, yeah.
By four.
Three forty-five.
But the, the thing I noticed when I was going over is that the last few were very straightforward, like these are.
And I thought the morning- And I thought the morning.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, three thirty, we're ready to proceed with the three thirty list. I'm going to vet the list first and then we'll proceed. Thirty-seven seventy-five Bastido Avenue, the applicant. Any opposition? We will proceed. Thirty-eight forty West Lynn Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? No. Number thirty-nine, one twenty Indian Road, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Okay. Number forty sixteen oh two Dundas Street West, any opposition? Okay. Well, we will hold that one. Would you, I mean, you may go out in the hall and try and resolve your issues. Please do, because we've had a few this morning, this afternoon, that got settled. So if you could do that and see what you can do. Forty-one one sixty-seven Hampton Avenue, applicant.
Yeah.
Aren't you the one that just opposed the other application?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry. Okay. Any opposition to Hampton Avenue?
No.
Okay. So let us get started. Number thirty-one.
Seven.
Thirty-seven, I mean. Seventy-five Bastido Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Yes. The purpose of this application, let me introduce it first, please. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear-ground addition with a deck. And all we have before us is the materials submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
Michael Shazatfar, on behalf of the homeowners at seventy-five Bastido Avenue.
Okay. So is this floor space index a point seven eight? Is that the existing floor space index?
No, that's the proposed.
Okay. So what is it now?
The existing right now is sixty-one, point six one.
Okay. All right. Okay. So do we have any questions? No questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if no one has any questions, I'd like to move approval of the application. I think it's extremely minor and clearly meets the test for variance.
We also have no communication from neighbors or city staff with any concerns, so I'll be happy to second that motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Have a great holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thirty-six forty West Lynn Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the two-story semi-detached dwelling by reconstructing and enclosing the existing front porch. And we have before us materials submitted by the applicant and a staff report from planning. And your name, sir?
My name is Deep Sahoda. I'm here from Accadia Design Consultants.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, 3:30. We're ready to proceed with the 3:30 list. I'm going to vet the list first and then we'll proceed. Thirty-seven, seventy-five, Bastido Avenue, the applicant. Any opposition? We will proceed. Thirty-eight, forty, West Lynn Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? No. Number thirty-nine, one-twenty, Indian Road, applicant. Yes, any opposition? No. Okay. Number forty, sixteen-oh-two, Dundas Street West. Any opposition?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we will hold that one. Would you, I mean, you may go out in the hall and try and resolve your issues. Please do, because we've had a few this morning, this afternoon, that got settled. So if you could do that and see what you can do. Forty-one, one-sixty-seven Hampton Avenue, applicant.
Yes.
Aren't you the one that just opposed the other application?
No.
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. Any opposition to Hampton Avenue?
No.
No. Okay. So let us get started. Number thirty-one.
Seven.
Thirty-seven, I mean. Seventy-five, Bastido Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
The purpose of this application, let me introduce it first, please. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear-ground addition with a deck. And all we have before us is the materials submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
Michael Shazatfar. On behalf of the homeowners at seventy-five Bastido Avenue.
Okay. So is this floor space index a point seven eight? Is that the existing floor space index?
No, that's the proposed.
Okay. So what is it now?
The existing right now is sixty-one, point six-one.
Okay. All right. Okay. So do we have any questions? No questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if no one has any questions, I'd like to move approval of the application. I think it's extremely minor and clearly meets the test for variance.
We also have no communication from neighbors or city staff with any concerns, so I'll be happy to second that motion.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Have a great holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Same to you.
Thirty-six, forty, West Lynn Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the two-story semi-detached dwelling by reconstructing and enclosing the existing front porch. And we have before us material submitted by the applicant and a staff report from planning. And your name, sir?
My name is Deep Sahada. I'm here from Accadia Design Consultants.
Okay. So you're aware of the two conditions proposed by the...
I'm actually here to defer the application because there was an additional variance added and we already communicated that with the...
There's what?
There was an additional variance added, or I think the variance was increased.
Oh, okay. All right. So, yeah, we have a note that you were going to ask for a deferral. Okay. So there's no opposition? A deferral because there's a variance added?
It was increased. The variance was increased, the floor space index, what we requested originally. It ended up being more because the drawings that we submitted didn't match the city record drawings, and we actually double-checked some measurements on site and there was...
So you made a mistake. I don't mean you necessarily, but somebody on your client's behalf made a mistake.
But the variance you're going to request after the deferral is less than what we thought before?
No, it's more.
That way around.
It's the other way around, that's right. Yeah.
Okay.
Proceed, yeah.
All right. So can we...
Okay. A motion to defer due to missing, well, not missing variance, but the fact that the variance is higher than what was circulated to the neighbors, so we have no choice but to defer with, and I take it that you're content to pay, there's a small recirculation fee, the notice has to be sent back out to the neighbors.
That's right.
Okay. So a motion to defer.
All in favor? You have your deferral, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number thirty-nine, one-twenty, Indian Road. And the purpose of this application is to convert the existing five-unit building into a detached dwelling with two secondary suites by constructing a rear-two-story addition, a rear basement walkout, rear second and third floor decks, and an in-ground swimming pool in the rear yard. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a report from right-of-way management, seventeen form letters in support, and one letter of concern from three Algonquin Avenue. Can, we have your name, madam.
I'm Jillian Green, and I'm the architect for the owners of one-twenty.
Okay. So I, I take it that there's a mistake in the purpose. It says, "Convert the existing five-unit dwelling into a detached dwelling." I assume this building's already det...
It is detached, yes. We're converting it into a single-family dwelling with two basement apartments.
I think it should read, "To convert the existing five-unit detached dwelling..."
Yes.
Into a dwelling with...
You're actually making less. It's going to be single.
We are making less. That's, that's correct.
And I just to point out that, welcome, because you are, I believe, our first Parkdale Height Park application in Toronto, New York, which has moved from the York Etobicoke Committee.
Thank you very much.
You're our first Height Park application.
Excellent.
You're going to get better treatment here.
Well, let's see, will we? So the scope of the proposed work is to include two basement apartments along with the single family.
I see.
And I would like to distribute a revised site plan.
Is this revised from what you submitted to the city?
Yes, it's revised and it's hoping...
Has this been submitted to the city?
This has been circulated in the city.
Okay.
Circulated in the city and to transportation.
Can you speak to what transportation is referring to as the excessive paving adjacent to the right-of-way that they want you to read on the previous...
Okay. So I've got a photograph, actually, that might help, but I, but can I just maybe read through the, I sort of prepared an idea of what's going on. So this revision relates primarily to the proposed parking. The original proposal requests a decrease in the provided parking to one space, but this revision proposes to maintain the existing area of two-car parking within the client's property. This will mean that the current condition will not change and the curb cut, which transportation was referring to, will be, will continue to be used to access the parking.
So does it change the variances?
It, it removes the two parking variances from...
That's number six?
...the proposal. Number six and number one.
Yeah. Okay. Remove those?
Remove those two. The other thing that we are proposing in, in modifying the parking is revising the soft landscaping percentage, which will, we're, we're actually putting more soft landscaping in the backyard now, so that helps our percentage.
Does that number go to from nineteen percent?
That's number four.
Now, now it's close to forty-five percent in the, in the backyard. It goes from...
Can you give us an actual figure?
Yes. It, it's forty-five because it, what we're doing is adding an additional thirty-three square meters in the back.
So it's twenty-six point seven plus thirty-three, or do you have a revised number for the twenty-six point seven?
Plus thirty-three, plus thirty-one, which is the pool.
So twenty-six point seven plus thirty-one, so it's now fifty-seven point seven?
Um...
Square meters?
Yeah, yes. I, I had sixty, yeah, yes.
Took twenty-six point seven and added thirty-one to it, as you just said.
Okay.
Or is it, we need to know that, not, you know...
Yes.
We're able to deal with it because it is more than...
Yes.
The variance was circulated to the neighbors.
And that translates to forty-five percent.
That's correct.
Be accurate.
Yes. Yes.
So it's fifty, what's the number?
Um, so, okay, well, I had thirty-three square meters is the, is the new.
Oh, okay. Thirty-three, so that would...
Plus thirty-one is sixty-four. Thirty-one is the pool.
Well, you had twenty-six point seven listed on the notice, variance number...
Originally, from the, from the original, from the original notice.
Okay. So it's sixty-four?
So it's sixty-four is what we're, what we're saying now.
Sixty-four square meters.
Yes.
Being forty-five percent.
It's just forty-five percent.
How is the pool related to that? That's not considered soft landscaping.
The pool actually is considered soft landscaping in, in one of the bylaws that we found. And it relates to, I, I can...
Remove the deck of the ground floor or...
We, we've got a little bit of a deck around the pool, but...
Is that included?
But it is not included in soft landscaping.
It only includes water.
Just the water, yeah.
That's not landscaping.
That's, that's it. Okay. Would, would you like me to read the quote?
I take it's soft.
Yeah, yeah. We found that it's soft landscaping within the bylaw.
Unless you use hard water, right?
Unless you use hard water.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Are there any other changes?
Nope. Those are the, those are the two changes.
The existing curb that takes you to the opposed two-car parking spaces and it also provides access to the right-of-way, the right-of-way page currently?
It is currently, yes. It's gravel. Would it help to see what the existing...
Should be able to pick it up and put it up.
Yeah, I do have a photo.
Where does the right-of-way go?
The right-of-way just goes from Algonquin Avenue to, to a garage that's sort of dead set, dead ends.
So do you have a, does your client have a right-of-way over that, right-of-way?
Um, it's my client's property, but the neighbor has the right-of-way over his property.
Right. To get to a garage at the back.
To get to a garage at the back.
Okay.
Is this working? Yeah. Okay. So that, this is my client's garage, and you can see the white car is parked in the right-of-way. And so right now, the, the landscape is almost a hundred percent paved, so anything that we do is actually trying to...
You're going to grass that strip between the house and the garage? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
And where's the pool?
And the pool is going basically where the garage is.
I see. So where are you going to park?
Just it right in front, like, within the, within the boundary, basically right there. That's right.
There's some grass in the pool.
Yes. Exactly.
What you've got is low planting area, which has the focus on it is grass.
Yes.
It's sort of in this, I guess it's in the side yard compared to that house over there. That house is, I guess, number seven Algonquin, number one Algonquin?
Yes. Number one Al, um, yes, number one Algonquin.
Okay.
You can see the side of number one Algonquin. That's correct.
We had a letter of concern from three Algonquin about the change...
And I, and so number three is actually the house just...
Went over.
One, one next, yes. But we have a letter of support from one Algonquin, as well as, I, I've got, which is, which is the house that we're seeing. Yeah. All of the adjacent properties, we've got letters of support for.
So, right, okay. So they were concerned with the variance that you eliminated, the change from two to one parking, so I...
That is correct.
More their concern, anyway.
So now they're happy?
They should be happy.
So they should be happy because now we're not, we're not...
That's correct. Not adding another street parking.
We're not, exactly.
Okay. If there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion of approval of the application subject to, I guess we have a Transportation Services...
Oh, okay. And there's a note, actually, from Transportation Services agreeing to the revised version of the site plan and...
Where the condition goes.
Pardon me? So their site report is nullified now, now if, if you, if the committee agrees with the revised site plan.
Okay. So... Okay. Well, the motion has to take into account the changes in the purpose, Michael, and the other changes.
Do you have the, the letter to Transportation?
It should be within your, there's a, there's an email. They couldn't actually write a formal letter, but I, but they would write an email to, to support us, to let us know that they had seen the revision and they were, they were in agreement with it. Yeah. And it's part of the package.
Here it is.
It's, sorry, the print is so small.
We got good eyes.
Okay. Very good. So I made a motion.
Your, your motion is for the revised application.
Yes.
The revised application, if I'm correct, deleted variance six...
Right.
In the bylaw and one to the old bylaw.
Right. And changed variance four from nineteen percent, twenty-six point seven square meters, to forty-five percent, being sixty-four square meters.
Yes.
Okay. We also have to change the purpose, just to say, just to say, to convert the existing five-unit detached dwelling into a dwelling with two secondary suites, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's your motion? Are you second the motion? All in favor? You have your approval. You can go back to Etobicoke and tell them how well you were treated.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Number forty-one, one-sixty-seven Hampton Avenue. So the purpose of this application is to alter the two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear-third-story addition on top of the existing rear-two-story addition. We have before us material submitted by the applicant. Your name, please?
Marcus.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need a presentation on this application. It's rather straightforward. There's only three variances: main wall height, exterior main wall height, and the FSI, which is slightly over what's permitted from point six-nine to point seven-two. We have no communication from city staff or neighbors, so I'm pleased to move approval. I believe it's extremely minor.
All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays, and I love the hard water joke.
Thank you. Number forty, sixteen-oh-two Dundas Street West. Oh, so they're outside. Could you ask them to come in? Oh, yeah. She's the agent and...
You're for forty, right?
Yeah. I'm opposition.
You're up. You sit over there.
Oh, I'll sit over here?
Yeah. He's the second.
Why can't you sit anywhere?
Well, you just sit in that row, wherever you'd like.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If you, pardon?
I lost the owner. He just stepped away for a minute.
Okay.
Thinking we had more time.
All right. I'm going to introduce the application before we get started, so maybe the owner will show up. So the purpose of this application is to maintain and to continue to operate the rear restaurant patio that was approved under minor variance decision eight-zero-two-eight-oh slash thirteen T E Y for a term of one year expiring on June the fifth, two thousand and fourteen. So, and we have before us material submitted by the applicant and the staff report from community planning. Okay.
Mr. Lee, I know normally when we do these approvals, they're for five years because of the cost of a restaurant or doing a patio and everything. Was this a one-year or is it a typo and expired in June eighteen?
This was a one-year.
So what happened the last four years? Everyone just forgot about it?
Uh, he's frankly been waiting to recruit somebody to use the patio.
But has he been using the patio?
So that's, that's why she's here to test out.
I, no, I'm saying, but since June fifth, two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
But he used it for the one-year period?
Yes.
Oh, he did.
So he stopped using it and now he wants to sell...
Yes. I take his liquor license for the back patio was expired, so he needed to get that re-applied. And that's actually when he found out it had expired, but maybe he just, the hearing expired.
I see.
So it took him a few years to swallow the fact that he would have to get it back. So I wasn't involved with the previous application. The application is exactly the same, it's different.
Do we have a copy of the old application?
I don't have a copy of the notice.
Uh, no, it's here. It's, it's here. Term of one year, that's correct, with all the conditions about music and hours of operation, et cetera, et cetera. So that was interesting, that it was only approved originally for a one-year period.
Yeah.
Because, you know, usually there's costs associated with, with doing that, so... In any event, okay, here we are.
Okay.
Obviously, we have someone here adjusting you.
Okay. Could you tell us where this young lady lives? Because, because the rear patio has to be located at certain distances, et cetera. I'd like to know where she lives.
Yes. So I would expect that if any of the residents, the residentialself behind the patio had shown up to check the diligence, none of the tenants in the commercial residential buildings on Dundas have showed up or have objected. The lady here claims to be the owner of the buildings on either side. It's the first time that my client, the owner, has met her.
Mm-hmm.
And he actually pulled up a property, from a property system report, not seeing any information about her name on title.
Well, we'll let her speak.
Let's, let's hear from her. You can respond, so.
But I just wanted to point out that none of the actual residents are potentially impacted by the patio and the hours being restricted.
Well, if this lady owns a building on the side, it, she is affected, or her buildings could be affected.
Yes. We just wanted to verify that she actually is...
Yeah.
I don't want to point to her.
And just to clarify, what is, you indicated, you've got a one-year approval for the patio.
Yes.
And at the end of the year, or when you went to renew the license, you found out you didn't have approval, so the patio was not in use. What, so it's just, what is it used for now? What's this space used for now?
So, yeah, so I thought we heard it was used for one year now. After one year, we heard about the liquor license expiring or this permission expiring?
The issue is the separation between the province.
First of all, we need your name.
My name's Jason Abrams.
Okay.
And this is...
Okay.
Uh, this separation between the city and the province, and we had understood we were getting one-year probation. We didn't have complaints that we would have the city application move forward. I was not aware.
So you, you, the, the one-year period was a city period?
Yes. We applied during that time.
Right.
The province, and we received our licorice from the province. So we operated for about a year, not, not right-of-way, but for about a year. And then at some point, the city informed us and the province that the expiry had happened, and then we have to go back to...
So you operated beyond the one-year period you were authorized...
Yeah.
Until you found out and then you stopped.
Okay.
Yeah. As soon as we found out that it was initiated.
Okay. Well...
We're not the police.
Anyway, city staff doesn't seem to have any objections, so let's, why don't we hear from this lady, and you and Mr. Lee will have a chance to respond.
I just want to clarify, what is the space that is the patio? What has it been used for in the interim?
Uh, this...
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. And the patio is at the rear?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Abrams, just one other question. Is there entertainment of any sort on this patio?
We don't have entertainment inside, we have some music, radio, music on the inside, but we never had any音乐 or any other auditory sound.
Okay. And do you have a liquor license for the interior?
We do.
You do? So it's just with respect to the, when you say the province, liquor license to extend to the patio?
And we just, the, the lady has been disposing of it.
I get it.
So, but you are going to get a liquor license for the rear if, if we approve the patio?
Yeah. What's the name of the restaurant? What type of restaurant is it?
It's a half-point ink and it's a small whiskey bar.
Okay.
How many seats in the paddies?
I don't think it's anywhere from twelve to eleven.
Okay. Thank you. We'll hear from this. Would you want to, would you please come to the platform, introduce yourself? Would you speak a little more slowly and a little louder? Yes. So you're on both sides of this building?
You own that personally or in a company name or...
We can defend it. Myself, my sister, my mother.
You're all on, on title or there's... Okay. And what are those two buildings? Can you just explain? Are they a single-family or they're apartment buildings? What are they?
They're apartment buildings, so they have a commercial storefront on either side on either building.
On the ground floor. Can we hear what those uses are on either, the ground floor?
At sixteen-oh-four, we have is a hairdresser.
Okay.
And at sixteen-hundred, we also have a restaurant there, a French cuisine-type restaurant.
Okay. With no pa, with no patio.
No patio.
All right. And upstairs, how many units are there? How many stories?
Yes. At sixteen-hundred, we have, just in the actual building, one, two, three, four, we have six residences. And then in the back, we have a single residence that is accessible only through the back at sixteen-hundred. At sixteen-oh-four, we have two...
So it's within the envelope of the building, though?
Yes.
It's not a separate building? It's within the envelope?
No, it's, it's three buildings, all attached, they're on either end. And at sixteen-oh, two, and four, the single residence is attached on the both walls to both our apartments.
Okay. But the, the single unit that you talked about, that's only accessible from the back, is part of the, of your envelope, building?
Sixteen-hundred.
They go down the laneway to the back to access the entrance to their apartment that is in the back at sixteen-hundred.
Okay.
Okay. And what's the, while you're at sixteen-hundred, what is the rear yard of sixteen-hundred used for?
It's just a small lot that is open space that is used with two possible spaces for It's just a small lot that is open space that is used with two possible spaces for parking vehicles.
Two spaces, okay, right. Two parking spots, yeah.
Is that unit at the back attached to sixteen hundred and only accessible through the laneway? Or is it a separate building?
No, it's attached to the rear apartment that has access to the only.
I see, okay.
And it was put up a hundred years ago or so?
At least a bit, forty plus years.
So just to clarify, because it's pertinent to the patio proposal. So about half of your backyard is potentially parking and the other half is grass, green space?
There's no green space whatsoever. The back area of all three buildings is unpaid. It's actually very dirty, very muddy. Uh, it's never been, I mean, we've tried to maintain over the years just by putting down, kind of the national, just by putting stones to keep all the dirt and whatnot down. It's not paid. It's just dirt road and descent to go down the laneway.
You can park in the back if you need to.
Yes, tenants require parking spaces.
So there's two parking spaces?
At sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
Tell us about sixteen oh four.
Sixteen oh four, uh, so we have the commercial business on the main.
The hairdresser, yeah.
Uh, upstairs, we have two apartments as well that are accessible and to the front. In the rear of sixteen oh four, we also have two apartments in the back of sixteen oh four that are only accessible through the rear as well. On our property at sixteen oh four, we have actually two built garages. That portion of the property, that then is also accessible for purposes of parking vehicles for tenants.
And how many story buildings are these?
Uh, two-story.
They're two-story. And, and the applicant in sixteen oh two in the middle, it's also a two-story building?
Yes.
And they have, and they have residence apartments above?
Yes.
So I take it you don't, neither you nor your mother nor your sister live in either of these buildings?
No, we don't. We live in the neighborhood of each and every one of our property.
Okay, so what's your objection to this patio?
Um, if I may read, I had sent out a submission letter. Unfortunately, it was too big to, so if I may read the letter and appreciate that. Dear sir, I am property owner at sixteen hundred sixteen oh four. The property question wanted to maintain the rear patio, which is approved under my variance decision.
No, it's okay.
As this expired as of June fifth, two thousand and fourteen, the property location has a both my property share and walk-in design of the building. It's both on mine. The application to renew and reestablish the rear patio should not be allowed as per following reasons.
Okay, could you just slow down? Because I just, the preliminary stuff I caught and I wasn't concerned about. But now you're speaking a little too quickly and I just missed, start this sentence over again because I missed what you said and I think you're getting to the crucial part.
Okay, uh, I started the sentence with, this application to renew and/or to reestablish the rear patio should not be allowed as per following reasons. There is a precedent established by the business located known as the Hooked Cube at thirty fifty-six North Street West, in D'Amico. The operation of a rear patio is being requested with minor variance as well. This rear patio would fit onto a rear laneway facing residential housing. Permission to build and operate said near patio was not granted. This rear patio at sixteen oh two Dundas Street West is too close to our residential tenants that reside in the back of both our buildings. Sixteen hundred sixteen oh four, remaining to those controlled and made out.
Oh, could I, could I interrupt you just for a moment? What is, what are your buildings zoned? What is the zoning on those buildings?
Residential and commercial.
Okay.
We have three residential apartments, each with their own separate entrances for the rear of the buildings, with another four residential apartments with windows facing the rear of both our buildings. A total of seven apartments in the rear include two commercial businesses, one of which has access in the rear and the other only from the front, could possibly be affected. All three properties back onto the rear backyards of numerous residential houses on Atkins Patio. These residential houses too can be affected by the operation or maintenance of the rear patio. The limited space of the rear of the buildings are the surfaces of parking spaces. We have an open, all open space on our lot that's into accommodating two cars. And we have, as I mentioned, two garages to accommodate the vehicles at sixteen oh four. Properties at sixteen hundred and sixteen oh two share a mutual right of way on property belonging sixteen oh four for purpose to access each other's respective properties in the rear.
Okay.
Overall, this is a tight space in the back with a mutual right of way to access all three buildings, which will probably be cleared at all times and with no obstructions. While the building of the patio is approved, it is important to note that the owners of sixteen oh two Dundas Street West did not ever operate their rear patio. They were given permission of operating the extension of their bar business to the rear patio on a trial basis to determine the risk factor and such, and were given a specific timeframe to do so. Approval for a term of one year expiring on June fifth, two thousand and fourteen, special conditions. This trial period did not ever occur. They did not ever have this trial period as specified. Instead, they have been using this rear patio space as a garbage storage holding area through the time it was built.
Did you own, excuse me, did you own sixteen hundred and sixteen oh four in two thousand and fourteen? Or two thousand and thirteen when this application was made?
Yes, we did and we still do.
Did you object at that time to the application?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and is that why it was restricted to one year?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Therefore, there is no evidence that they can operate and maintain a rear patio to comply with said specified conditions as set out in since expired. The intended purpose of operating a rear patio in a combined residential area does not serve any purposeful intent of development of land other than to cause or create further congestion in the rear of the properties. It would be lack of privacy, enjoyment, and pleasure to all seven residential units and two commercial units. Tenants have a right to the pleasure of living in their units without direct disturbances causing them privately and or publicly.
Okay, so.
C R two, it's a zoning is C R.
C R two? So you say?
C R.
Yeah, so, uh, you, you, you're, you say that they never used the patio as a patio?
Not as far as I, I know.
Okay, and do you visit your buildings frequently?
Yes, I had concerns with the property owner sixteen oh two over garbage, probably even parking, things like that over the years. And we visited and I've seen and I've taken a peek and I've looked and I've noticed. And I know dating back possibly within the last two, three years, it was never used. It was always storage. It was always garbage. It was always possible things were there.
But that's in the last, that's in the last two or three years, but in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen?
It was shortly after the patio was built and shortly after, when we were at the first committee adjustments meeting where they granted it in the one year, we took notice of what was happening within that year and noticed that it was not being used.
Okay.
As far as my knowledge.
Okay.
Can I just clarify? I'm referring to the survey plan. I don't want, I want to make sure I've got this right. On the, the west side of your property sixteen oh four, there is a one, a right of way. It goes up your property and it crosses your property, then sixteen oh two, and provides access to sixteen hundred?
Yes, correct.
Okay, you indicated, one of your points was that this patio would impact negatively on the residential properties behind.
Yes.
But it's buffered between where I understand the patio would go. There's a very large metal clad garage with access off of this right of way, which is between the patio and those residences.
So the patio, or the patio would go to the end of the property line or the actual physical building in the front? Then you have space for like the driveway? Of, I don't know exactly how many feet, but or to the, to the, of that line, there is a piece of right of way that has to only be available with, losing much, as far as where the garages are built. Now, we do have two garages on sixteen oh four.
Yeah.
What's in the middle over here at sixteen oh two is just a shack. It's literally a wall. It's not even, I don't even know what you want to call it.
But it's not being proposed to be, at least in, in this application, it's not being proposed to be demolished. So it in fact, but that rather questions your comment about the patio having impact on the residents. There's this building in between.
There's no building. It's.
Well, you just said there was.
It's down, meaning that there's a driveway.
Yeah, there's a driveway and then there's an existing garage, metal clad garage.
To the end of the property line, of his property line.
Yep. Which is the.
Residences are all.
No, 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 I'm talking about the residences behind, the people.
On Atkins, Atkins?
Your point.
Yeah, you did.
My space at sixteen hundred, there's no garage. It's an open space, meaning that there's only a wall, some.
Yeah, 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 hold on, hold on. I'm, I'm going with your points one by one.
Yeah.
On Atkins, you said, you indicated that the patio would be a disturbance to the people on Atkins. I'm questioning that because there's a garage between the proposed patio and the backyards of those homes.
Right, okay.
And there's also a right of way on the other side of the garage. So the patio is a long way from those residences and, and there's a block.
It's a very short distance. It's a very short distance.
I was going to make the same point Mr. Nipfel said, because I heard you say it backs onto the Atkins residences.
Yes.
But I would point out two things. There is a buffer, as Mr. Nipfel said, and also, I assume Madam Secretary Treasurer, the residences on Atkins had noticed of this application. We don't have any comments or concerns from the people on Atkins. So I appreciate you're here on your own behalf, on behalf of sixteen and sixteen oh four. But I was going to challenge that comment also. You also said something about it could possibly be affected. That's what you mentioned about your own people possibly be affected. And I guess when I hear you saying that you never did have that one year trial period because you're saying they never really operated for the year. I was going to ask, when I first read this at home in preparation, I was going to ask if, you know, were there complaints? What was the history during that one year? But you're saying they never did have a history of one year. And they're now coming back for, um, for, I guess, permanent approval and, and city planning has, has requested certain conditions of approval, but not a time limit. And I, I assume you either want this application to be refused or alternatively, how would you feel about a trial period? That, you know, it's already been built. They normally say it's not fair to have a one year trial period because the cost of building the patio, I don't know what the cost involves, you know, every patio is different. It may just be some timbers or what, I don't know what they did back there. But that was going to be the issue whether, actually, okay, yeah, they didn't talk about it being time limited. So, anyway, we've heard what you have, you've had to say about the impact potentially on your.
I also wanted to question, the number of units that you said would be, presuming that the patio is a nuisance and it's noisy and all that, and I'm not convinced that that's going to be the case. But if that were the case, the, the majority of your residents, you have three stories, right?
Two stories.
Two.
Two stories.
Yeah, three stories.
The three, yeah, but you, you have a, you have a commercial on the main floor.
Yes, yes, sorry, I have two, I was.
Two above, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so the, the units that would be impacted are the ones that face.
There's a number of windows or?
That face north. How many windows are there on the north faces of your two buildings?
So we have the fire escape.
Yeah.
We have the actual residential apartments, which are.
Okay, and all I'm worried about is the actual residential apartments that would face north. How many are there?
So at sixteen hundred, we have five windows that would be affected.
Are they, how many units is that?
So that would be permanent, uh, sorry, the one unit that is accessible only through the rear.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's on the ground floor or it's on the second floor but accessible from the rear?
It's just, it's, it's considered on the ground floor with the. Just.
Okay, okay, it's one unit, okay.
So there, uh, we have then the two apartments in the back, one on the second floor and the third floor. And then there's apartments that have also windows facing from there, uh, which, you've got windows facing on Dundas and you've got windows in the back that face towards, uh, north, uh, the back of the building. So those two units plus the ones in the back and the one that is accessible only in the back, that would be five.
You have units that go the full length of your building? How could you have windows that face Dundas and also face the back?
They have, because it's, it's, it's part of the fire escape, your window per se. So those units have a, it's a long elongated. They don't necessarily use it for purposes other than for fire escape, but it's.
But if it's a fire escape, let's be honest, if it's a fire escape.
Yeah.
People are not sitting out on the fire escape expecting to not be, and to not have noise. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned with the livability of the unit. You presented it as this is a problem for the livability of the units. I'm trying to figure out how many units are affected. I'm personally not convinced that because a fire escape has access to the back of your building and the fire escape might actually overview up. I'm not sure that that's a, a big drawback, but I'm sure if my living room window is looking at the patio and, and they're playing loud music, maybe, but.
There's going to be.
I need you to tell me that.
That's fine. So we can knock those two apartments out. So at sixteen hundred, there will be three apartments affected. At sixteen hundred, and there will also then be one, two, three, four, four apartments at sixteen oh four that have direct, uh, windows to the back and access to, to your existing apartments. So all together, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighty-seven residential units that are going to be.
Yeah. And are you familiar with, or are you aware of the conditions that the planning department has suggested you place on the patio? Planning department has said that they don't object to this particular application, providing there are three conditions attached to the approval. Are you, pardon me?
They don't quite say that. They say they have, they say if we approve it, they want these conditions. They do say planning staff have concerns regarding the potential negative impacts associated with the close proximity of the patio to the neighborhood designation properties to the north. That means the Atkins property. Your property is residential, commercial.
Yes.
There, the variance is related to the fact that people on Atkins who back onto it, who haven't raised any concern about this application. They didn't seem to have any concern because you are in the C R zone, mixed use. It's the people on Atkins behind who they're concerned about, but none of those people have written in or appeared today in opposition.
But that doesn't matter because.
I'm just saying that the, the planning staff seems to distinguish between the impact on your properties, because they're C R, and the, the people on Atkins. So if there was all the people in Atkins showed up with screaming and yelling, that would be, I think, what the issue is. But none of those people, the city is suggesting that limit the hours of operation. They said there's no music, no amplified sound.
There's a limit on.
And a limit on the size.
No training, no thing.
Yeah.
No trial period that ever took place.
Right.
Meaning that people would have been aware that such thing may be happening, they could possibly have been here.
Okay.
I'm sure I know what you mean.
We, but, but we're also, we're also concerned about the impact on your tenants as well, even though the planning department may not be concerned.
Well, it was a C R, it's a C R zone, that's why.
Yeah.
But, um, so here's, what I would, you know, what I'm thinking, and we have to hear back from Mr. Lee in response to your comments. But, um, if we were to make our approval time limited, let's say, three years or five years, would that satisfy your concerns at least to, or you don't want it there at all? You're thinking, are you?
I think we've gone back and forth with this enough.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not supposed to go back and forth. Supposed to hear from you anyway. We're trying to reach out to you.
Yeah, and we knew that we, we were okay with the decision when it was originally given back in the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen to give the trial period. You know, two points, as far as I'm concerned, you know what? If you are half the intent to run the business wholeheartedly and responsibly, then you would take advantage of that opportunity for any adjustments to do that trial period and then to allow people to pose their opinion. If you do not wish to do so, then you're just wasting everybody's time.
Okay.
Come back for it again the second time.
All right, so.
Thank you.
I, I'm sure we're going to hear from the applicant that they had this trial period. Did you have any complaints from your tenants during the years two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen?
Myself firstly, no. They could have contacted my sister because of the, you manage a.
But you talked to each other, right? If your tenants had complaints, you would know about them, whether they talked to your sister or to you?
It's dependent on what, on the caliber of issue that we deal with on a one-to-one basis with the tenants. If it's an issue that we can deal ourselves with, we can get it all, not to bother, uh, the other one, we don't, we don't. If I have an issue that I can handle myself with my husband, my family, and that we don't have to bother, you know, personal affairs, then I don't have to.
So in, in effect, if, if the patio had operated and we're, we're sort of told that it did for a period of year, year, and there were no complaints, and we're not hearing of any complaints, you're saying it didn't operate. But if, for whatever reason, there were no complaints and it was in operation, then the trial period actually occurred. And there were no reported adverse reactions to this particular patio. I'm, I, 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 I'm surprised that you would like us to render a decision that leaves the backyard as a garbage dump, which is what you're saying.
That's what it is, that's.
Well, but won't this clean it up?
No, I mean, it, working with the property owner sixteen oh two has been conversation over the years. I've also, all the years with regards to garbage and situations like that, I've had to call the city and have my law officers.
So maybe this is his way of, he's, he's clearly proposing something better than a garbage dump. He's clearly proposing something else.
So, so, ma, yeah, madam, I, madam, I'm not concerned whether you like it better as a garbage dump or not, but I assume when you came here today, you discussed this matter with your sister and you, and if she had heard about any complaints from the, your tenants, she would have told you about it to bring, bring it forward today because.
Nothing before us.
Yeah, and so at this stage, we understand your tenants didn't have any complaints. Your evidence is that the experiment didn't take place. We've heard implicitly at least that, well, we didn't. We heard from Mr. Abrams that, that he operated for a year or so. So we have to take it that there weren't no complaints from your tenants. Okay, at least that's, that's what I see the evidence as. So, okay, so we'll, we'll hear from Mr. Lee now and see what he has to say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So I was before you last summer for your patio application at fourteen thirty eight, and that's your last, which is in the same block, uh, it's called the federal. Uh, councilor by law actually gives a, meaning with the owners and residents, their condition is that rear of the patio is only separated from residential lot five, very narrow, same way. It's actually a much greater condition than this application is.
Right.
Um, and we had no objections at our, during, uh, we had a few, like, residential lot more information. The owners obviously reassured them that they were respectful and that exactly they were cleaning up the backyard. Uh, and, uh, our decision actually was granted for operation between eleven AM and eleven PM. Um, for whatever reason, the original application for this property was nine AM to ten PM. Um, I was prepared to actually come up here and ask for the same eleven to eleven, consistent with the block, for reasons of your patio. Um, and councilor by law, um, Jason Abrams tells me that she was aware of the operation of the patio at the time, she was aware of our application, obviously. She had noted in the circulation that this, this application would be, uh, be for you today.
Okay.
Um, given that, and obviously the noise by law is always there to make sure that, you know, residential tenants could be using this backyard for their own doing, still be using it at ten PM. Um, I think having, as, as the patio cleaned up, will actually, as you were saying, clean up the area, actually save more of the tenant for people to enjoy spending time outdoors, to work for those operating hours. Um, to address, um, concerns about, um, the right-of-way, corrections, like, when it's exactly the right-of-way there, certain purpose of the patio.
We, we don't do, we're not dealing with those issues.
Ms. Maderas has mentioned that the patio did not actually operate for a trial period. As such, there was no opportunity to gauge the impact on the neighborhood. Um, I know that she is in a CR zone and we're talking about the people behind, we haven't heard from those people. What's your position? Did this patio operate at, at any time? And also, let me know if the patio was already built, is it wooden slats, is there fencing? What has he done to?
The patio structure is there.
Yes, what's it made out of?
Uh, it's a wood, like, it's a little wood.
Wood floor, wood decking and walls or?
Directly on the concrete.
On the concrete, okay. So it hasn't had to put a drastic amount of money into it?
And how big is it?
Is it fenced?
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah, it says the, the twenty-two point eight-five square meters.
That's what it's limited to, that's what you built, you built what?
Yeah, it says that's per the plan submitted.
Yeah. And, um, um, to address your questions, um, I also view this as the notice being circulated for the residential zone people on Atkins. And I checked, checked the application multiple times to see if I had any complaints or concerns from the neighbors on Atkins. Um, but we were very surprised that somebody from the actual CR zone building, people who currently live above restaurants, uh, who understand that they're being on a CR zone, that's why it was noise.
For sure.
Today, we're not asking for the patio to be open at two AM.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I don't, just trying to be consistent with previous patio approval.
Yeah, is this patio fenced then, or is there a wall, at least some privacy on the sides and the flangeage or at the, the rear?
Yeah, I mean, when we, uh.
So it's completely?
It's not completely tripled.
It's enclosed on three sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, do it with a door, there's a door.
Needs to have.
Well, it needs to have a door for egress purposes in the event of an emergency.
Michael, there's a one point eight meter privacy fence around the patio.
Okay, it's pretty high.
So are you, is your client satisfied with the three conditions the staff puts forward?
He'd like, he'd like eleven to eleven.
And that I had a previous decision, um, be approved for eleven to eleven.
Yeah. I assume they don't need it from nine to eleven in the morning?
Yeah.
I don't even know if they're open at that time.
If I had more time, I would have reached out to councilor by law, see if she agreed that she should be consistent with the hours.
Mm-hmm. So. And the liquor license will extend to the patio as well, right? That's why, that's why you haven't done it, because he had to come up with the money to come back and make those applications.
And then it's, it's in for, for a.
And I take it between November and April, it's not gonna be in operation in any event?
No, of course not. Sure, uh, the owner's looking forward to, during his spring cleaning, actually cleaning up.
Okay.
And I, I, I told, uh, Mr. Maderas that, um, you know, this is a case of imagining worst case scenario, drawn on bylaw absurd. Everybody will be policing the area now that the language is, uh, essentially, uh, access for, uh, patios.
Right.
I actually think it'll be more official, and, um, obviously, if he doesn't run a good business and he's getting most complaints, the councilor, he revoked his parents. So he still has to be unexamined.
So how long does your client want this, uh, this patio permission for?
Well, given that he did agree to the one year, um, back then, and the cost that he put in supply then, um, spent a lot more money on his fee for the application that time around in this time frame, I'm thinking about.
Yeah, so if it's time limited, he's gonna have to come back, pay another fee at some point, whether it's.
When we first talked about it, and I started.
So your position is it was open for approximately a year, not?
No reasons to believe otherwise.
Okay.
In that conversation with councilor by law, we actually referenced this project when we were going in.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You say you checked to see if there are any complaints from the residential area, were there any other complaints on record?
Looked into the file to see if there were any objections. I, I can't even confirm that Mr. Maderas was there at the previous meeting. Not sure what the reason was.
No, we're, we're talking at this point, when you put in this application, there was circulation, no one has come forward from Atkins Avenue in the residential zone, which is what the variance is for, the residential zone, not six, not six hundred and six hundred and four.
Essentially, if this were far enough from a residential zone, there would be no minor variance for being next to a residential unit in a residential building.
Yes. Okay.
That's, that's true, but we still have to be concerned about the impact on these tenants at sixteen hundred and sixteen oh four.
They are a CR zone.
And I reassure Mr. Maderas that his job is to make sure that it's comfortable, and I've done many patios missing, and I've seen some patios get approached. They have used there.
For sure.
Can I clarify one thing? Um, on the north and the south block lines, are there, other than the proposed fence around the patio, is there other fencing that separates the three properties?
I'm not sure if the fencing applies, but when this actually goes through, uh, front of buildings, people need to, there's work that needs to be done.
Is there a fence though along the, on your property? Is there a fence along the north property line? And is there a fence along the south property line?
On the south.
There isn't east and west.
I'm referring to.
Between the property and six oh, six hundred, sixteen hundred and sixteen oh four?
I'm referring to, to drawing A zero. I'm trying to determine if there's a fence that goes along the north property line that separates this property from six hundred and sixteen hundred and.
Oh, I see.
And is there a fence that goes along the south property line, existing?
Um, existing there is, obviously, there's a thin line that I've shown.
No, no, not, not that one. I'm, I'm satisfied that the patio itself has got a screen around it. The remainder of the backyard.
Yes.
Between these three properties, is there anything that delineates the separate?
Completely open.
Okay, right, thank you.
Okay.
Right-of-way, and obviously, we're not.
But the right-of-way is at the back, not at, for the back, right?
No, no, train yard.
That right-of-way is how people get in and out.
Okay, got it.
Obviously, um, they, they have history of having some disagreements about how that right-of-way is used. Obviously, we're not gonna have agents driving to this establishment.
And the right-of-way actually is adjacent to the patio.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, okay.
Uh, can you, I don't know if it's one, how much is the application, how much is the application fee? This is a separate, different an application fee from a residential application for a variance? Do you know what the fee is for this? Or perhaps Mr. Lee can tell us, do you know? Yeah, would you know what the fee was for this application here today?
Forty-six hundred dollars.
Uh-huh, okay.
That's fine. And about, um, obviously, it's off to work.
Yeah, well, it's just the fencing, I guess, he's, it's right on the, on this, on the pavement, it's not on a wooden decking material or anything. He always has to buy the patio equipment and the tables and the chairs and all of that. Um, okay.
I mentioned Mike, he's a.
You don't work for free? Okay.
You prefer to tell them about your.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions, I'd like to move approval of the application, um, subject to the three conditions that the planning department has recommended. And also subject to the provision of a one point eight meter privacy fence along the north and west, um, limits of the patio, with the exception of an access gate.
Yeah, which apparently is.
As shown on drawing A dot one by Edward Lee Architect. I believe that the, I believe that there have been, um, measures taken here to reduce any negative impact. I believe the conditions from the planning department, um, are, are clear and, and attempting to reduce any negative impact. I believe that the, um, proposed fencing, which we're not recommending be added here, but was already proposed by the applicant, is a reasonable solution to separate the patio from the adjacent uses. Um, I do not have any difficulty recommending the application subject to those conditions, and I also do not think that we need to add a timeline.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Niffel, that's very good, uh, points. I do add to that the fact that I think it's noteworthy, we have no complaints from the people on Atkins in the residential zone that triggers the variance, uh, that Ms. Maderas, Terrance, are living in a CR zone where they have to realize they have commercial uses underneath them and perhaps patios and the like. Uh, in terms of the, I was thinking of a five-year time limit, but I think I'm convinced by the fact of what you said, that if they, there are problems, the other way, it's a whiskey bar, they could lose their liquor license, and then that would be, because it would be, the cost of forty-six hundred dollars of having to come back in three or five years, uh, given that they've already had a trial period. So I will second my colleague's motion.
Well, I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Maderas's properties are not in a residential zone and that the bylaw refers to a resi, a distance between residential zone and, and this patio area and requires the application because of the shortness of the distance. I think that when we, we have, um, uh, neighbors, we always have, when we have an application, we always have to look at the potential neg, negative impact, whether they're in a residential zone or they're not. So, uh, I, I wanna be clear that, uh, my approval for this application, uh, i- is not based on the fact that the neighbor who is complaining about this, uh, is in a CR zone. Uh, what, my, my decision is based on the fact that, uh, I, I can feel that this, or I, I'm convinced that this patio was run for a year or even longer, because they didn't know that it had expired. Uh, and that there were no complaints, uh, that, uh, Ms. Maderos knows about from, from her tenants, uh, or is aware of from her tenants. So, uh, I think that the experiment has been run, it's been a successful experiment, and that the applicant is entitled to a, uh, our approval. Uh, so in that case, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is that what they call? Well, yeah, yeah, no.
But I think the, I still think, uh, residential people in the rear are entitled to, rated for, uh, scrutiny or whatever you call it.
They're mentioned in the bylaw, but still.
If you just do, it's an.
Yeah.
It's your, uh, store.
Yeah. There's a difference between the people behind, even there, they're about in a commercial district. You know, it comes down to my old argument from when I grew up, the people that bought the house across from Hood Park, the right field, they would freak out when the baseball would go over the fence on their front lawn. Or what, you bought a fucking.
Please, you bought a house to get baseballs, that's what you.
But I'm saying, you, you know, it's, it's, it's like when people, you know, those streets that you go to, take from my neighborhood to the Allen, you know, the whole, oh, you know, you're, because you're paid less for your house if you're, uh. Two minutes, about four thirty, four thirty-four or something. It's, you know, I still say, like, in condo developments, you know, if you buy a unit next to the garbage chute, or next to the party room, or the gym, and then, I still say you should have to sign a disclosure that you know that you're buying, because then the condo board that takes over the building has to go to extraordinary measures, like, and we pad the party, the exercise room, uh.
It's like the.
You know, you have to take these.
It's like the residential development, we had on a corner where it's across the road from the people who use back.
Yeah, 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 mhm. But.
That's the thing, the disturbance, um, everything, to try and mitigate.
It's like, you know, you buy a condo and you get, you know, you're near the garbage area, well, you know, someone's gotta be next to the garbage area, negotiate a disc, you know? But the trouble is the board, we've spent.
Or a garbage dump.
Yeah, but the issue is.
What's a? Basically.
I, yeah. We don't need to. But like the condo, we've spent a fortune, you know, padding the party, the floor and the, you know? Next to the garbage chute. We didn't have that.
My, my, my wife said too many is gonna be finished by, you're gonna be home by five thirty, quarter to six.
Right, there's more traffic now. At least when we finish at seven thirty, there's less traffic on all.
Yeah.
One advantage. Anyway, good meeting.
It's a good meeting.